Different activities to occur without getting into each other. So we had to bring the pavilions back. New restroom has to come back. We had to update the drainage. And in so doing, we still wanted to preserve a green area.
What are we gonna do with the Hibiscus Festival?
They're gonna operate.
Are they gonna park on the grass?
Nope. Well, it's an event. They can bring their vendors on there and they can park on the grass for that event. However, they're also going to have to pay a fee and to obtain the permit. And we use that just in case.
I mean, obviously, they're gonna have to drive in there to set up their vendors and tents and all of that. And without even being through one event, I'm hesitant. But I would like our engineer to please come to the podium and give us his expert advice on why we're lacking parking and what we could do to make it better and should we go talk to DOT.
Thank you very much. For the record, Mike Jardullo. I'm with Wyler Engineering, 201 West Marion Avenue, Suite 1306. Just to shed some light on a few things. One, at your next board meeting, or your next council meeting, Mitchell Austin will be making a presentation to the board, which will include some concept plans for the future development. And he also has a bunch of exhibits for some different options. He made it. And he's got a bunch of exhibits that he's gonna share with you that's gonna show how much more parking we're gonna be adding in future phases. When the design was originally done, it wasn't phased to be constructed with this phase as part of it. So this phase has a lot of uses, but a lot of the parking spreads on RETA. So there's gonna be significant parking improvements. The city got the LAP grant, needed to fund a port, or phase a portion out of it. So they funded, they phased this portion. And, you know, we're kind of in the interim period where you've developed a lot of your heavy intensive uses, but not a lot of the parking that goes with it. The roundabout, you know, like it or don't like it, you won't offend me. But just a history on the roundabout. Wyler Engineering, we started designing this in like late 2009. Prior to that, the roundabout concept was a concept that was dreamed up by city staff and presented to the board. And the board at the time, none of which is, you know, currently sitting anymore, you know, approved that concept plan. So we were given a concept plan that showed a roundabout. In our, you know, working with staff, you know, we made sure that it met fire requirements. But there was always envisioned to be a roundabout. It always had two ADA compliance spaces in there. It's evolved. There was a vendor space at one point. You know, now there's just the bike racks at the end. So there's been some different things that have happened to the roundabout. But, you know, it serves, it served the purposes you guys, you know, described, obviously. But the main focus at the time was to restrict the parking from within the park so that users weren't, you know, having to deal with non-formalized traffic or people driving around in the park. So you had different sorts of users who may not benefit from people driving in there, you know, just wherever on the green space. Also, you have to consider, you know, if you allow people in the park, if they're gonna drive, you know, over things and break things, you know, sidewalks. You know, we reinforced the sidewalks. You know, we have thicker sidewalks than normal to account for occasional city traffic. But if you have routine traffic driving over your sidewalks, especially hitting those, you know, edges, you're gonna crack your sidewalks up in time and you're gonna have, you know, a lot of maintenance to do with that. Now, with that being said, if the will of the board is to modify the roundabout in some way, shape, or form, or add parking, or allow for parking on the grass, I'm more than happy to help you with that. Yes, if you take away anything that was paid for with federal funds, the first thought is, well, then you have to give back the federal funds for what you take away. My feeling, however, is that you would, can make a strong case for making a change if you justify that the change you're gonna make costed more money than the improvement in the beginning. So we would help you work with DOT and the Federal Highway Administration to try to get approval if you decided you wanted to convert the parking in some way, shape, or form. But anything that you do that's gonna modify the ASBIL plans for what the feds paid for, you're gonna wanna make sure you clear that with them in advance. Same goes for the Water Management District. We were able to work with the Water Management District to reduce the size of the retention areas on the project by only treating the water from the vehicular traffic areas. So if you add new vehicular traffic areas, now you need to have more retention in your park. And they're taking up more of your green space now for not only parking, but retention. And anything that would, they call it co-mingling, but any flows. So we're probably wind up with significantly more stormwater retention if we do, you know, something like the original L configuration.
Thank you. Yes.
When we do present Phase Two to you at a future council meeting, you're gonna see a lot of additional parking options. And I will say this. It's still not gonna satisfy the people from the Guitar Army who have been coming to us because they're gonna say those additional parking areas, while a lot more parking spaces are not close enough. And it's not the same concept as to what it's been all these years. Just keep that in mind. You will have a lot of additional parking spaces. The Hibiscus Festival, other than the vendors, do they really plan on having people parking all over the grass?
Lisa Han, zoning official. No, they are permitted to have the vendors go in, set up, and then the vendors will park elsewhere and general parking will be elsewhere, not on the grass.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Yes.
So on my master gardener hat, I agree with the turf that we have in the park is not designed for traffic. We ran into that problem at Lashley Park. And I think one of our residents, so, put it very nicely that it was a problem for the kids and the ruts and those kinds of things. I would agree with Lynn. It would be nice to see a little something come around. Not the whole U shape, but something come around closer to the large pavilion so that people could at least get a little closer for the convenience purpose, especially for handicapped and that kind of thing. I also pondered the suggestion, the notion that was sent to us by a resident about putting in, in Phase Two, putting in a pavilion by the parking lot that's in between the pond statue and the parking lot that we're going to now retain, that's off Gil Street. If there was a pavilion there, that would be then more convenient to parking. The only issue is it's a little closer to houses. So I don't know if that's an issue. If music is an issue for the residents that live across there. But it certainly would provide a pavilion that's closer to parking that would be easier for musicians to convey their equipment, so.
Any other? I mean.
Mayor, just, this is the third time we're bringing this back.
I know, yeah.
I'd like to, I think we as a city and the public, we need to have some kind of finality on this issue.
Michael would like to talk. Would we let him talk?
Yes.
Thank you. There's adequate parking at that end of Gilchrist Park for most days, most uses. I really liked the blighter walkway. I understand why things were done. The, but when you, one of the things that I'm reacting to a little bit is that we're talking about, well, we need more parking. And there's some discussion amongst the council members about spending huge amounts of money in order to increase the parking, when really and truly, there's adequate parking for most times. What we really have is a peak use period. This is a traditional historical, this is the inexpensive, least administrative way to solve what is a truly a problem. I mean, you saw the pictures that I put up there. That there was a vibrant scene that now has been, because of the construction, displaced. As it came back, the rollout, there's not adequate parking. I personally have witnessed the inadequacy of the parking at, on Thursday nights. And so, so if you recognize that there's inadequate parking and it's having a deleterious effect upon the music scene, that's a traditional music scene, what you're really weighing is the cost of some impact to some grass, which is nowhere near the costs of the kinds of capital improvements that you were addressing and thinking about for solving a parking problem that really is only a parking problem on Tuesday and Thursday nights. We're quite used to parking on the grass, have done it without incident for 30 years. And that park has been used since there were cars, with cars parking on it. And so, and so it's the rule that the city has. And the rule can be modified in order to recognize the peak periods of use, not cause a deleterious effect to the, to a beautiful music scene that doesn't happen anyplace else. Give life, continued life and encouragement to this music that we have that spills out all over the rest of the city and through our community. And you can do it inexpensively. Just have staff remove the bollards on Tuesday and Thursday and put them back on Wednesday and Friday. Very little, and if there's, and if there is damage to the grass, then bear that kind of expense. When you talk about, oh, we have the Hibiscus Festival, what does that cost? $150 a day? How much grass are you gonna fix for the three days, for the $500 or something that's there? You know, are, are, we didn't destroy the grass. The only time there was ever a problem in the past was when it was too wet. Well, when it's too wet, people aren't showing up as much because they can't get on the grass. They don't wanna walk in the wet grass and those kinds of things. But there's a few that do. And so, yes, that was my suggestion was, how about, let's do a common sense thing. Lance, who's there every day, who takes care of it, knows whether it's gonna be too wet or not, and he just doesn't pull the bollards up. No explanation. Everybody understands it's too wet to park on the grass then. And so you avoid most of the time that you could possibly have a, the damage on the grass. Driving on that grass, well, let's think about the vendors coming in. You gotta drive in and then drive back out. You've doubled up how much, if you're not letting them park there. You've doubled up how much traffic in and out and rolling is on it. I mean, a car sitting there isn't creating great trouble. So the inexpensive, least administration solves the problem and at least give us a try for a year. Get a report back every now and then. Let's, let us love your park. Let us praise you for fixing a problem. Please.
Thank you. I mean, this is not, this is not an easy scenario to fix because, I mean, we've heard time and time again that they've been able to do this. With the redesign, it does create a safety issue for me. And if it were that simple and we would absolve ourselves of all liability and, which cannot happen, I mean, I would be tempted. But I just can't go there right now. So, yes.
Would it be possible to do, you know, those blue and white signs between here and here on these times, parking allowed? Something of that sort that would, that would say a very limited, you know, limited area that would only be there and only be permissible for those particular times only? And that would just, I don't know, but that.
Blue signs?
You know, the signage, like, or maybe the red and white ones? You know, like the, between arrows, one here, one here? And basically only, between these, basically two arrows, these days between these times permitted, and outside of that, no.
Would that restrict access?
Well, are we talking about just on Tuesday and Thursday nights, number one?
And it would just be signage for that?
Number two, would this be something that if somebody parked outside of the sign, they would be ticketed?
Yes.
You know, we can, it would require an amendment to our park ordinance, which you're probably gonna need to do anyway. So what we would do is say, parking permitted on Tuesday and Thursday nights between the signs as identified. Any other parking is prohibited.
That's what, that's what I would propose.
My own, this other concern is safety concern again. If, if we do, if we lift the ban, we're going to be building a restroom right here, right here, in the, that box. I mean, can we at least get this, the park finished? And then, because if not, we don't even know what kind of shape this thing is gonna be in after we're done with that. And we've created, and like, we heard non-formalized traffic. Now they're gonna be in a construction zone. I just, I mean.
Well, with the construction zone part, wouldn't there be, what you call it, fencing?
Yeah, but they're still gonna have to come in from off the street. They're still gonna have to come in.
Does this design that's up on the screen right now tie in with where the bollards are on? Could we, could we consider just allowing parking in that U shape? And, and like barricading it off on Tuesday and Thursday nights? Maybe we put cones or something that keeps people in that? And, and put it, put it on a trial basis for maybe three months and see how it goes? Because we're gonna start getting rain here soon. And in three months, we're gonna kind of see what, what it's doing. And if it doesn't work out, then we, we cut it off. Just try it. I don't know. I mean, it's just another option.
It's an option. It would require city staff, which.
It's just, I'm trying to offer a compromise, I guess, is where I'm trying to go with this. But if we, if those line up, if that parking scenario lines up with where the bollards are in the two locations the bollards are located, then maybe we could try that and just allow parking in the U shape for a three-month period, trial period, and see how it goes. I throw that out as a suggestion. And dead silence falls over the crowd. Hey, gotta have a sense of humor, guys.
Absolutely.
Is, is the pond there?
No, a ditch. It's a ditch right now.
My concern is that it's, it's not, it's not all flat in there anymore.
It's not.
It's not. There are some gullies and different things, so that's. Well, it's, when I was walking on it, it's not even. So I, I do have a concern about that, but.
When I was walking, you still had gaps between the layers of sand.
Yeah, that too, that too.
And that will fill in over time. But that tells me that at this juncture right now, that side's not fully established. But we're not talking about right this juncture. We're also talking about.
I mean, could it be just in the U until the, like, for the trial basis? But ultimately, until the restroom's done and keep it in that area? I don't know.
It's gonna be in the way of construction, I would think.
Well, eventually it will. But are you saying on Tuesday and Thursday, you want staff to go and cordon off this area? I don't think that's reasonable. I think you just have to either take the bollards off or not.
I mean, my concern too is down the road with, with the other uses of the park.
I agree that once we get things and people, any group says, we don't have enough parking. Are we gonna let any group park in any part of the park that's, because?
That's what I was suggesting, the signage, is that it would be just that place only as part of the ordinance.
Respectfully, I don't think people are gonna read the signs. Sadly, that's kind of what happens.
And we've heard that they wanna be as close as possible.
Yep.
So we need some kind of, I mean, at this point, I'm at number one until we get everything situated with the park.
Well, if there's no, if there's no other, if, if all of the options, if there's no option.
And number seven.
Other than number one, if there's no option that gets enough, it gets three votes, it's status quo, with the exception of adding some more ADA spaces, because that's just adding ADA spaces, that's not.
Is everybody okay with that, adding two more?
Sure. But.
I don't know. Is everybody okay with adding a few more ADA spaces on the Harvey Street entrance? I mean.
Well, we probably should do that anyway. But I don't know that that's gonna solve any problems at all. I think having nickel ride, if we were to provide, if nickel ride would. We'll have to let them drive on the Harbor Walk.
Well, that's the question, that was where I was gonna go, is Wyler's here. He said that the Harbor Walk is not, is okay for an occasional vehicle to go over. It wouldn't be regular. This is a smaller vehicle. Is that capable of holding that traffic?
But I was gonna suggest only to come around the, the roundabout.
And drop people off.
And drop people off at the roundabout. Because, well, right now, people can't find a place to park. So they're, you know, if we say, oh, go park at the government parking, but they're gonna schlep their, their equipment over if at least they're able to get over there.
I'm thinking more about the ADA people, is what I'm thinking more in terms of the, the potential.
Go ahead.
Just, again, Mike Jardullo, for the record. Just to address, the nickel ride, I think, is a, is a great solution or, you know, hopefully meets the needs of this group. But just consider, you're gonna have a hard time getting any vehicle onto the Harbor Walk itself because you have seat wall around the compass rows and around the pavilion area. So you're gonna have trouble getting it on there. You're also gonna have an issue. You don't wanna take somebody who needs, you know, ADA compliant access and, and drop them off in a grass area because there aren't a whole lot of areas where they can drive on the grass and the person can set foot on a concrete surface. We, you know, we knew that you weren't gonna have vehicles in the Harbor Walk. So we didn't intentionally design it to support vehicular loads. However, we, we assumed that some of the city's staff members may wanna drive a small pickup truck to pick up trash cans. So we did make it a little bit thicker than you would normally. But my concern is not necessarily with people driving on the surface, but anytime you just kind of hit that corner. And if you get routine hitting, you know, that. But if they drop off in the roundabout, right there where the truncated domes are on the side where the removable bollards are, that's a completely ADA accessible route from the pavilion. It's not far. It's probably less than 100 feet, maybe right around there. So they could drop off in the roundabout and have an ADA accessible path to the pavilions there.
Thank you. I mean, I walked the lawn too, and it is, it is, it's, that's why I'm worried about the, the events.
It's ruddy.
Yeah, it's very ruddy. It's very ruddy. And seeing how the tiki, you know, tiki's area looks right now, it's, it's, that's what we're gonna have, so. So, are you, are you hearing anything?
All I've heard is that we are going, so far, all I've heard is that we are going to add a few more ADA spaces at the Harvey Street entrance. And unless I hear anything else, we're staying the course.
And I, and I don't know whoever talks to Nickel Ride. I don't know who that is.
Oh, yeah, we can, we can touch bases with them. It'll be up to them as to whether or not they wanna.
Can we at least try it? I mean, can we try to talk to Nickel Ride?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we can contact them. I mean, I don't know what they'll do. It's up to them.
Right.
Now, officially, they don't begin until June 1st. The real, they're doing a get a little bit in between, but officially, they don't begin.
Yeah.
Well, they were at Blues and Brews, so they could probably be invited, possibly.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Am I hearing anything else?
I don't think so, based on this discussion. I wish that something would pop into my brain, but.
Well, next meeting, we're gonna talk about Phase Two, correct?
Will we be ready for Phase Two at the next meeting?
Further, I could, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. Yes, sir, we will be.
Okay.
So the Phase Two discussions, we would have a picture of what the park really looks like so we could really?
We will have a, you'll have a, a picture of what the additional parking spaces, the off-street parking spaces will look like as part of Phase Two. And you can then make a determination as to whether or not you want to include all of them or not. Yep, you'll have that right in front of you. There'll be all off-street parking, as well as the diagonal on-street parking, all the way down to the bayfront.
So that's at the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
That might give us some clarity about what has to happen west of what this is.
Yeah. And I did talk to Margary about my backwards P idea, but I think he's been out. So he was gonna do a drawing similar to what he has here for that other idea, which it wouldn't, it wouldn't add a lot of parking, but it would be, you know, closer to the Harbor Walk and it would be straight in like it is now on that side. So it wouldn't cause a problem. So we'll see what, what he can draw up. And then we can go through DOT and see. Do we, Mike, do we have to do anything with the ASBILs to build the bathroom? Do we have to go through DOT to, to improve upon?
Again, Mike Jardullo, for the record, the answer is no, you don't. You, you actually had that approved and then it got removed from the scope. But that's, that's, you know, strictly in addition, you're adding to. You're not really destroying anything other than some grass. You don't have to be concerned about that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next, we don't have any new business, but we have recommendation from city officer, city manager.
No, but I'll tell you, the May 2nd and the May, is it May 2nd, the next meeting?
Yes.
And the May.
Oh, we have new calendar.
16th meeting are getting full.
Okay.
Okay.
So in other words, bring a sandwich?
More than it is. We'll be active again.
Okay.
City attorney.
Nothing further, thank you.
City clerk.
Yes, under boards and committees, starting with vacancies, we have unexpired terms as an alternate on the code enforcement board and one for an alternate on the historic preservation advisory board. Under nominations, we have two three-year terms on the utility advisory board. We do have two, only two eligible applicants for nomination. Therefore, if you would like to make a motion to nominate and appoint?
Nominate and appoint both, please, second.
Thank you. Would you like to vote on?
Yes, I was just reading that. We have a motion, a second, to appoint Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Schindler, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried unanimously.
Okay, also, under nominations, then, we have an unexpired term on the historic preservation advisory board. We have five eligible applicants for nomination.
Nominate all?
Thank you. Okay, and the last one, under nominations, we have a four-year term on the Pontegora Housing Authority and two eligible applicants for nomination.
Nominate all?
Okay, under appointment, so we have an unexpired term as an alternate on the building board. We have two eligible applicants, either you're voting for them.
And Mr. Gutfridsen is the appointee.
Thank you. Policy and legislation, I don't think we, did we jot anything down? I didn't jot anything down. Howard, did you? No. Okay, council member comments, we'll start with Jahak.
At Cooper Street, we just, just got some donations from Bernstein Russell CDC and from the Congregationalist Church to begin the career assessment program, which basically their career personality test, interest inventories, skills profilers, and value assessments, which allow a child to be able to have kind of a vision of who and what they are and, and help them be able to design their coursework. So we're, they're starting from sixth grade on. And, you know, we're starting with eighth, but they've told us that it's a little earlier is good. So pretty much, so kids will be able to have an idea of possible career choices so that they can choose curriculum properly. Also, we're gonna be offering this to adults in transition as well. It's like maybe home school, like some people that are looking at jobs as well as just being able to make better decisions. So that's something that's beginning in May.
So how do you convey that to the school system, then?
Actually, like, the principal of Pontegora Middle, she's gonna be calling parents, doing her parent thing, so let all the parents know. So we wanna get kids, of course, started in May, but during the summer, we also wanna do that. And also, we're partnering with Division Boarding that Drug Free Pontegora is doing. So when they get that who I am, they can also then map the path of getting there. So I'm doing, so, so any, any children in the county who are interested, you know, we have the, we have unlimited amount of tests in terms of license. So it's just time only, just being able to schedule them, so that's there.
I think sixth grade is good too because by eighth, they could be taking high school courses. So they really need to line that up in sixth in order to be on that track for eighth grade. Lynn?
Just one thing. Since 90 days have passed and the attorney of record has. Since 90 days have passed, and the attorney of record has withdrawn as the representative for Mr. Plattner, I suggest we move forward with proceeding to foreclose on the property and get the fine out of this man before this is all, before he goes bankrupt entirely.
We have already, we're already moving forward on that. In fact, I got an update yesterday that we're well, well on our way towards that, that action.
Okay, so we are officially foreclosing on this.
Absolutely. Yeah, that was done, that was actually done before Mr. Plattner came before us.
Yeah, but I thought we kind of put it on the back burner.
It was, and then after that last meeting, we, we, we went, we were moving forward.
I, I really think that enough time has passed. We've given him more than fair opportunity to fix this.
Yes, and we're, as we're actively pursuing.
Good, thank you.
I, I will say this, he, he has a new attorney.
Good for him.
And they've contacted us. So he's coming by the office sometime next week. I don't know who he is, but he's coming by.
Okay, Nancy.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity, stimulating us in discussion, Gary, that helped us, you know, put some things together. Good discussion amongst all. I appreciate it, and I think it's a good move, a good step forward for the community. Thank you.
Shalom, rehun. Peace be with Allah.
Citizens comments, any topic? Please take the podium, either one. It doesn't matter at this point. Nobody's making a presentation over there.
Hi, I'm John Miller, and I wanted to thank you, council, for the free-flowing, can't say it right, discussion about appropriate growth. Thank you for starting us today. I think the outcome was very positive. I think you should take that section of the meeting and put it on a separate video and let the community see it as many times as they want. I know that PGICA would, would show it many times, because it's a very positive statement about who the city is and what, who you are, more so than I've ever seen in any of the other meetings. So I commend you for this, and I hope you do put this video out so that we can all, so you can come back and say something towards next door. Because they, it's just, that's just bad information most of the time. And this was all good information this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't hate me. I'm Sheila Gager. I live in the Stark District. And since the two speakers who spoke for the kids are no longer here, I just wanted to make a point. Somebody said that, that we had a lot of land in Gilchrist Park. We, we really don't. It's not a big park compared to the parks I grew up with in the Midwest. And one of the sad things I saw recently was a woman and her child trying to, to get a kite started. And they were using the retention pond that's just left of the park, because that was the opening expense they have now. So what I'm urging is, it would be nice to have an area of the park with nice, healthy grass, so that kids can spend a little bit of time running around on grass, kicking a ball around with a parent, trying to fly a kite with a parent. And, and I think that would be a really nice asset in that park. Okay?
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kay Eves, and I'm a little nervous too. I had a question. Is council going to direct staff to discontinue working on that 84-foot tall building thing? So their staff is still going to continue working on that? Okay. And then my second thing was, Gary, I thought your presentation was fantastic. I was really impressed with it. And I was impressed with what everybody else said. I think that's wonderful that you want to revisit that Team Punta Gorda type thing, and hopefully you'll include the residents some way, like through the PGICA, HOA, other citizen groups and everything. I thought that was fantastic. On the parking, on the grass, I agree, there's not enough parking there, not just for the Guitar Army, whatever that is, I don't know, but also for other groups and just the regular citizens. If and ever the future, you do allow a special exemption for the Guitar Army? I have two groups, two groups of voters. My voting club that has 250 voters and my social club that has 350 voters, the Seafarers and Just For Fun, I would like for special exemptions for them at some point, so. Because we're getting older and can't get to the pavilion so well. And then also, I was at that meeting the other night, and there are a lot of voters who think you're doing a fantastic job and a really good job with the city. There's just a few things they disagree on. So if you hear disagreement because of one thing, that doesn't, don't take it all personally. And also, thanks for recognizing the dance group at the Y. I love that building. There's nowhere else that, that fits a large enough dance group like that. So the building's old and ugly, but there's nowhere else for that to go. So thanks for recognizing that there are different people. And also, just talking to an older couple on my street, they don't use the internet, they get on their computer every so often. So they don't get the fantastic, you know, emails that you all do send out and everything. So thanks for being cognizant that there are people who don't come here and everything. Thanks.
Pat Niles, Gateway Point. Yes, I can't talk long. Thank you very much for the Monday meeting. I watched and listened to people as they were leaving the meeting. So I think sometimes when I heard some reactions today, it sounded like all of us were watching the same accident and walking away with a different what happened. It was a very, very good meeting. And, and I figure since the rest of you got something to hang plaques, all I can give Howard is another, another A plus. So for how that was run or how it was handled, it was done very, very well. And the people walked away, and they were laughing. Many were laughing when they leave. There aren't a lot of angry people. The other question I have, and it's the last one here, is when you're going to be talking staff and the city council in the future and the mention of, again, the 84 feet, a question came, I was thinking about is, has the staff or the city council ever sat down and listened to the group of owners, property owners, who own all the empty lots down there? And what do they envision individually as a group or as a group? It may turn out people just want a one- or two-story-high, small, small place or a small gathering or a small dance place, and there's only maybe one person or one group that, that wants 84 feet. And that, I think, would might alleviate a lot of this, of this idea that everything is already done and figured out ahead of time, and that we're going to put the 84 and spread it across for the future of anyone, just like that lady said the other night, that if you take buildings down, can you then go 84? Perhaps that's something to wait and deal with that individually. And at this point, find out what those lot, I'd love to know. I, I'd almost like to buy their lunch and find out what do they want to do? What is their vision? And how much money do they, if they are selling it, how much are they looking at selling it for and hearing from them? Because those number of lots are the ones right now that are the flip side of where this is going to go. Thank you.
Harvey, go over Punta Gorda, it won't prolong the day. I thought the discussion you all had on growth was stimulating, encouraging, very optimistic, and just exactly what we need, what we need for this, for this city and the community. And in reflecting, it also ties into the presentation that, that Aqua made on Monday night with the opportunities and the cautions that they expressed and pointed out, the factual information about what, what can happen or what could happen with our city without, you know, with maintaining the status quo. And I know you don't want the status quo. Status quo means, actually, status quo is, there's no status quo. You're either moving forward or you're moving backward. We're, we're progressive city, and we are progressing. And I think your thoughts and ideas and your commitment to move forward is very progressive and extremely commendable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Brad Gamblin, local Punta Gorda resident. I do want to, this has been a long meeting. I think this is almost a record for me to sit through. But I will tell you that what you have discussed, the open discussion, I think it was fruitful. I think it was positive. And I want to see, and I hope we see, the continuation, especially the presentations by council, council member. And, and I have to say, Gary, that was excellent. I think we're looking a little bit past this 84-foot and height discussion, because there are so many infinite possibilities. There are examples throughout the country of what can be done with a space such as a city center, but also with our town overall and our city overall. And I'm proud of everybody. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oops.
Seeing none, we are adjourned.